Good evening, welcome to the December 16th, 2014 regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We had a regular meeting on November 17th and a work session on December 8th. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes for November 17th, December 8th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes as written? Seeing none, can I have a motion, can I, all those in favor of approving those minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Next up, we have our recognitions, Dr. Dressen.
Well, it's our annual recognition of our state high school league champions in girls tennis, so I'd ask the tennis team and coaches to please come forward so we can recognize them for their amazing accomplishments.
Don't be shy.
Here we are. We'll start it off easy if we just go right down the line. Name, grade, number of years you've been on the varsity team, and then I'll pick it up down at the other end.
Kayla Merzwecker, senior, in two years.
Sophia Stevanen, senior, in two years.
Sophia Ready, freshman, in three years.
Michaela Burns, senior, in two years.
Haley Bucin, senior, one year.
We won't go here with this guy.
Steve Paulson.
Perry Forster.
Coach will start out with you. Tell us about the start of the year, what you're thinking, the possibilities around being able to do another championship. What are your thoughts? How'd you know what were you thinking as you entered into the year?
Sure, we had a lot of seniors this year, which provided great leadership. As always, they worked really hard during the offseason and certainly coming into the year, that's our, that's our goal, but you never know at the time, and they proved that they are worthy of the task, so through their hard work and dedication, especially during the offseason, they came in ready to play, so it was fun, fun to watch.
Talk a little bit about that championship match with Prior Lake Savage. It was closer than it looked, a lot of, a lot of tight matches, but what happens? How does he, the Hornets just seem like they can always turn the corner in those matches?
They seemed to peak at the right times in the state tournament. I know the kids love being there in the, at the state tournament, and Prior Lake this year put a lot of their players at doubles and provided some great challenges for us at the doubles positions, but it also showed how deep of a team we have because we, we end up winning two out of the three doubles as well, so along with the strength of our singles, we end up winning 6-1, and so it was a great win.
It was a great win, it was great. And Perry, you do a lot of coaching on the assistant side, what's the program looking like as we look forward? You're the ones that get to see those future stars coming up.
It's great, since, since we started four years ago with a third team, our JVB team, we went from 14 kids, I believe, the first year, and this past year, in the team that I don't coach, we have a third coach we added, we, there were 34 girls on that one team. So there's a lot of kids, there's just a lot of kids in the program that play tennis. I had 18 girls on the JV, so there's a lot of kids, like, and Steve always tells them to play tournaments, play tournaments, play tournaments throughout the winter and summer, and hopefully come join the varsities, a few of them, next fall.
Great, great. So let's take it back here, what were your thinking? Start out Prior Lake, the doubles matches were tight, what were some of the emotions going through when you're going through all that?
Um, it was rather nerve wracking, I'd say, but I think that the, we all have support or faith in each other to pull through, so I think that our team work together is what helps us be so successful.
Okay, how about a high spot in the year? What was one of those moments that you really enjoy when you think back on this whole season? What were some of the high spots?
Well, we had a team sleepover, which was really fun, and then, and then definitely the team finals, like when we beat Prior Lake was a really good moment, yeah.
And as we wrap through the career, talk about your experiences, what you were hoping probably in those elementary years and middle school years, and actually get to get on the court the way you did.
Yeah, it was a really good experience. I've been playing tennis since I was little, but not seriously until I was a teenager, so I think all my hard work, like pulled through, and that was a good experience.
Just talk a little bit about team, too, I mean, just the whole thought of how, you know, it's an individual event, how does that team really pull it together, because it really does seem to happen?
Yeah, our team does a lot of stuff outside of the court, too, which has been some of my favorite moments of the year, where you would always like go to Chipotle after and everyone would be invited. I don't know, we just have like a really good chemistry, which is very like crucial for every team that wants to do well.
Caitlin, you've repeated a state championship, your second year, but I go back to that Prior Lake match, that was really intense, and I know in the championship match you beat a good friend, talk about that individual competition piece in your world.
Um, yeah, I really just went into like the whole thing, just like having fun, you know, it's my senior year, whatever happened, happened, and I just tried to relax and just focus on like each match one at a time. It was really hard against Prior Lake, like it came down to like the last couple of matches, so that was really nerve wracking, and I tried to focus more on the team competition, that's my favorite, and then playing Haley in the finals was really hard. I mean, I wish we both could have won that one, really, but I'm, I'm happy with the outcome.
Well, congratulations again, Coach and team, it's, it's the championship, but it's also the way you do the championship, and I'm, it's always exciting to be at the matches and hear the positive feedback from the opponent's parents on how classy you guys perform, both on the court and off the court and in the academic world, so congratulations on a very successful season, we wish you the best going forward. I think we have a picture to take here, and we've got some recognitions to give. Congratulations, 2014 state champion.
Ricky, want to just walk us through tonight's agenda, please?
I certainly will. Do want to note that the board did meet in a couple work sessions, we had a work session on December 8th, a lot of talk about our next generation facilities, the board then also met earlier this evening to learn more about some, a community survey that was completed, and then also talking about some of the leadership work going on in the district, including with the board. The board is doing a lot of work just as we prepare for 2015 organizationally, so that work was done. As we look to our agenda tonight, we did have our recognition, we are going to have a presentation on school facilities, a little bit later, we're going to start off with some reports around our tax levy that the board will be acting on later tonight, as well as our 2014-15 budget, and then a brief leadership update. And the consent agenda items, we are pretty straightforward with some recognitions and some gifts. Our action items, again, will be taking action on the levy, which will be payable in the spring of 2015. The final budget for this current year, we've got our revisions in place. The alternative facilities bond, we'll learn more about that, this is some improvements we'll be making over the summer months, we did some bond sales that went well, we have some insurance that comes due that the board will be acting on. Our community education program is doing some strategic planning. We're also taking a look at the course offering changes, we're going to move that to discussion, so that's something the board will talk about today, but we're going to take action in January. These are course offerings at the secondary school in 2015-16. We've got a board action we need to take around American Engine Education Parent Committee, we have some policies to review, and then that'll take us right into discussion around course changes, facilities, and take a first read on our 2015-16 calendar, and then again some more policies, and that will conclude our agenda for the evening. It's a busy agenda, but I think we'll be able to move through it with a lot of good information for the board to take action on.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have any requests for members of the audience to speak this evening? We did not. Excellent, we're on to our final tax levy for 2014, payable 2015.
Yes, Business Director Margot Bach to come forward, and she'll give us an overview of the tax levy, as well as taking a look at the final budget numbers for our current school year 2015, or 2014-15.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board. Let me, I've got several presentations tonight, as you can tell by the agenda, so let me get the first one here. So as part of the levy certification process, we're actually in the final part of our process, it actually began last July, excuse me, when the district submits information to the state regarding our enrollment and various pieces of data that they need to calculate our tax impact, and then we take that information in September and approve a preliminary levy through the finance of facilities and you, as a board, and then the final part comes in December to approve the final, but also we're required to have a public report on that final levy certification, which is, we're meeting that requirement tonight, and then provide opportunity to answer questions if there are any taxpayer questions during the meeting, or even future taxpayers, since we have a lot of students here tonight, so basically that's our tax levy calendar. Our school levies, for schools, they must either be voter approved or set by state formula. The school board does not have the authority just to say we need an additional X amount and just place a levy, so it needs to be either of those two. Generally, most of our revenue sources are student based, not all of them, but the majority of them are, and then some of those formulas that are set by the state, the revenue is driven by the number of students that we have, and then the state will set a formula that such, so much of a percentage will come from the state, and so much of a percentage will come from the local taxpayers. And so, for example, if state's percentage goes up, then the local taxpayer amount goes down, but the overall revenue to the district stays the same, and sometimes that can be confusing when you get your own personal individual tax statement, because it, if it's gone up because of, for a variety of reasons, sometimes there's a misconception, well then the school got all the increase in dollars, and in some cases that may be true, but not in all the formula cases. Sometimes it's not additional dollars, because the majority of the time when we get additional dollars is because we have an increase in students. A little bit of history, our taxes are calculated in two ways, one on market value analysis, some of them are done on that one, and then the next slide shows tax capacity. I'm happy to report that both have increased slightly in the economic downturn in the past few years, we saw some declines there, but we are starting to come back, which is good from an economic standpoint. Major factors that impact the tax change, state level decisions on the formulas, as I just referred to, if the percentages change, if something becomes 100% levy or 100% state, obviously, that makes a change up or down. Issues determined by district voters, we don't have any in this particular levy, any new ones. We do have prior year, previous bonds, capital levy, and operating referendums that the voters have approved, and we still have the authority to levy those. And then other local factors, what's happening in our local market? Have property values increased? And the answer is yes, this year. Has the property tax base increased? So for example, the purchasing and the tear down and rebuilds creates an increased base, or when a new business is brought online, or things that increase the overall tax base that taxes are distributed over. Again, we, what's included in the levy certification are these voter approved referendums. Levy set by state formula, we have a number of those, operating capital, community services, equity, I'll explain more about those when we look at the table. Those are specifically driven by state formula, and typically are a dollar amount per student. And then there's some that are based on need, and we need to substantiate the need, get approval from the state, show a plan of some sort, and the requirements for any one of these that are listed in this area may be a little different, but we do have to show and get approval to get that authority. Again, we can't just determine it on our own, so an example of that is health and safety in terms of fire safety, health and safety management, employee education for right to know, our 10-year facilities plan is also under here where we submit a plan to the state and get approval. Those are just some examples. Major factors contributing to this year's levy change, we did have a large number of tax abatements in properties. We have the option or the authority to take those abatements over two years, that's when a taxpayer would, goes to the county and questions the amount of the taxes and they're abated, and, and so school districts can, then are given an adjustment for that if it does change. Ours were higher than normal, we did split, working with Finance and Facilities Committee in September, we did opt to take the abatements over a two-year period versus a one-year period to help soften the impact of that. Legislative formula changes accounted for an increase. Enrollment, kindergarten additions under the lease levy authority, and then we did, if you recall, and we discussed at length throughout the summer and into September, funding of the alternative facilities projects, just a shift, the total funding is the same for this coming year, but a shift between the pay-as-you-go levy, which is this levy certification, and then lowering the bond amount, which is actually later on the agenda tonight, which is lower than what we've done before. And we also had a debt excess reduction, so those are the combination of the changes today. The preliminary levy, when we first received the results in September, was over a 12% increase. Tonight's recommendation is about a 7.5% increase because of the adjustments we were able to make. Here's just a five-year history on the levy certifications. At the top third or section are the voter approved levies that we have, then as you go down the left-hand side, the very first levies, equity levy down through operating capital, those formulas are state set and they're, they can change legislatively, so you can see there were two new ones in the 2013 levy, the location equity, which was a reduction in the referendum levy, so if you look at the referendum levy line, you see a change there and a reduction between the two years, and location equity, you see an increase. And then the remaining from alternative comp down, all are that area where I talked about, we need to submit an approval or have a plan or a specific need, and the state approves that, and we get specific types of funding for that. Just another little bit of history here on the levy certification between fund, also a history on the change in property taxes between homestead, commercial, and farm for a number of years. And as everybody, we all are sensitive, too, and want to know, is the estimated annual tax impact of the levy? First, along the left-hand column there, you'll see a variety of property tax values. The average homeowner value in Edina is 400,000 if there was no tax impact or change to the property value, the tax impact for the recommended levy certification. You can see that right up to around 500 or 600,000, that there'd actually be a decrease in the tax impact to those home values, and because of the way the tax laws and how properties taxed works, that there actually then would be an increase above 700,000. The reason for the decrease is because of an increased tax base, but all the market values, or the majority that I'm hearing of, are increasing this year, on average about 8%, and that's part of the, the economy coming back around, and so if we take that average increase, so for example, that average home of 400,000 is now around 432,000, then what's the tax impact change combining this levy certification along with a property value increase, and so you can see that change in the tax impact there. This information comes from the Hennepin County. Did you, did you have something? No, okay. And then how do we compare on the average home of 430-some thousand compared to a variety of our school districts here, and we really are in the, and this is just school tax, so it doesn't take into account city or county, because that would be unique to each district, but just for your school district tax in these areas per student, and so we certainly are in the ballpark in maintaining similar to our peers. And with that, I will, now, a part of the truth of taxation is also to discuss the upcoming year's budget, which is very next on the report, but I think I'll pause here to answer any questions that you have regarding the levy certification, any questions that the community might have.
We have all of our ninth grade government students join us today. Anybody have a question? Appreciate you guys stopping by. Just a curiosity question, anything?
If they like schools, and they like numbers, and they like formulas, talk to me after the meeting, and I have a future career for you. Do you have a question back here?
Can you come grab a mic? We'll bring you the mic.
What exactly is a levy?
Okay, very good. So I'm supposed to look this way because of the camera, but I am answering you back in the audience. The question was, what is a levy? So a levy is how we generate some dollars for the district, either between state aid or a local levy. The local levy is a dollar amount that's distributed amongst properties as a tax. So your parents or homeowners or business owners, in our case, we don't have much agricultural land, based on the property value, then they pay a tax or a levy, so to speak, that then helps fund the school programs.
How, like, how would this budget, like, the budget affects, like, help us in the school, stuff like that?
Good question. I think I should start recruiting now. So how does, how will this help in the budget, help school programs for kids, or for the students? Is that fair? So if we don't have this, then certainly we have to go through a reduction process, which isn't good for the educational programs. And because of this levy certification and the budget I'm about to talk about, we will see how that we are spending over 80% of our budget on direct instruction or instructional support services to students, which is what we want to be doing. We want to be spending those dollars in support of our students.
Additional questions? Board, anybody?
So by the way, some of that money is being spent on alternative facilities, and so, for example, are we using the money to update boilers and humidity control, and so that if you were to come to school one day and not have heat, it would be because we didn't levy?
Good example. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, then we'll move to the budget portion. So in October, the audit was presented, we have the start of school, we've updated our enrollment projections, we also have the final, or the levy certification, which kicks off the 15-16 planning, and so tonight, I'm presenting the 2014-15 budget with all sorts of updates on, again, students that we now know who's here for the fall, also retirees, and actually hiring, and what staff we have in the, in the positions, et cetera, et cetera. Here is our K-12 enrollment history and projected enrollment, we have slow and steady growth, which is good. Our assumptions were, for the revenue, was a 1.9% basic formula increase, which the legislature passed in the combination of the 2013 and 2014 legislative sessions, all day K funding, and then our various kindergarten and other student projections. This budget does assume, or for expenditures, the adopted May 2014 budget plan, which had some enhancements ongoing and one time, and then also some expenditure reductions. We had some inflationary increase to supplies, budgeting for election costs, lane changes, TRA, all day K to general fund. You'll see that all day K changes when, if you look at the statements on the revenue and the expense side. Those were similar assumptions from the June report, and then what's changed since June? We did have a decrease in pupil units or student projections from what we actually projected in June. However, if you recall in the audit report, we performed better in the audit report, the combination of the two helped us out. We had an increase in special education projections, we also had an increase in the special expenditures, because that's what drives the revenue, and we had a coding change of technology levy and expenditures to the construction fund, so you can kind of see that when you look at the comparisons. Then in the expense side, we have new higher salary updates in the spring, we know we have a position or a retirement, but we don't know exactly who is, who is going to replace those individuals, so we've got that all in. We also have, because of the audit, we have the carryovers for the site supply dollars and also for capital equipment dollars. In your budget document, which is in your board packet, which I won't go through all of it tonight, there's four major sections, your introduction section has a nice executive summary that is more of a narrative format, that if you're looking for kind of the quick review of what changed or went up and down, or down in a particular area on revenue or expense and why, that, that's where you want to go. The organizational section refers to our strategic roadmap and our policies, and the financial section has some summary information with four years of history plus the current year's budget, you can find some comparisons there, fund balance impact, actually, I think the page numbers here on my slide are one page off, it's pages 13 and 14, give the summary of fund balances in two different ways or two different formats, and then the informational section gets more detailed, provides revenue and expense information in a variety of reporting formats for comparison purposes. Revenue history, this just shows in the various general funds, the history over time. This is where visually you can see that, for example, the coding change for the tech levy between the general fund and the building fund. You can see that, that change there. The expenditure history for the funds, for the debt service, you'll see that spike up, that is due to the bond refinancing, and that where we hold funds in escrow, you also saw it in the audit report, the auditor spoke about that, and just creates a unique issue on the revenue and the expense side in one given year. But ultimately, then, it has helped our overall debt budget, because we refinanced and lowered our debt over the remaining life of the bonds. This is general fund revenue history. This is a nice history from the state that I received last spring. The blue line shows overall state funding, state aids and levies per student since 2003. The red dotted line just below that shows the state aid portion, and so this is what I was referring to in the levy certification part, that the state pays some of the dollars and local levy pays some. And what's interesting to note here is that for the first time since 2003, in 2015, we're actually above, higher than what the state was contributing back in 2003, that we had been on a decline or a decrease there. But you'll see way at the line at the bottom, the reliance on local levy statewide has increased throughout the years. General fund expenditure history, salaries and wages and purchase services, supplies and- and capital. Got a couple different ways of looking at that also. Our revenues, we, we do receive the majority of our dollars from the state, seventy-two percent. We are a service-oriented business, providing services to our students, and so the majority of our expenditures are on staff to provide those students, or services to our students. Of those staff, seventy-five percent are teachers, thirteen percent are clerical custodial drivers, paraprofessionals, and administration. And then another way of looking at our expenditures, and this is what I was referring to when I was answering the young man's question earlier, is the majority, let's see, eighty-three percent of our dollars are spent on instruction, direct instruction, or instructional pupil support services. Also, the, kind of the green and the pink and the orange areas there of the pie. And then we also have expenditures on our sites and our facilities, so that we have a learning environment for our students to participate in programs, administration, and With that, all, that is the fourteen fifteen final budget. Included in your packet is also a comparison or some more detailed information comparing June budget to December's. If you have questions on that, I'll certainly answer, answer that. I also, then, usually there is a question, then how does this affect the long-range plan? So, I have a short update on that, but I'll answer any questions on the fourteen fifteen.
I have a question. On your previous page there, there was a, the first chart was showing the Aiden Client increase of students at the school, I think on maybe slide two or something. And on slide three or four, there was something about the decrease of pupils. I was just basing the contradiction on this one, maybe you could repeat the question.
Yep, I can, I can repeat the question.
So, was it, Margot, was the projected student versus actual?
Yep. So, the question was, on the graphic chart, the, it shows the enrollment growing up at, kind of at a steady rate. It's between a little over zero to just under one percent over the next five years. But then, on the previous slide, in the assumptions that changed from June, I said that the enrollment projections had gone down. And that, we are growing at a slow growth rate. The projections from June that we were using for the fourteen fifteen year were slightly off. And so, it's the projection amount that's going down. We are still increasing in enrollment. Does that answer your question?
Got another question in back. Margot, have you given the mic?
So, for the debt services, in two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, the close of the year, I think it was, you know, like, it was, you know, at the same level as all the other years, but then when I look at the expenditure history, it's, it's spiked, I was wondering why that is.
Now, that, so the question is, on the debt service history, there's a future director of business services right there. That's a good question. The, in the debt services area, we refinanced, and it's just in accounting, when we refinance, you hold the bonds in escrow, and then when it's paid in accounting, it, it shows up as an expenditure, but it actually then lowered our debt over the remaining life of the bonds. And so, we see that savings, taxpayers see that savings. So, it's just an unusual blip up, and then it comes back down again. And it's just the way we are required to account for the refinancing of the bonds, which is similar to if you've ever refinanced your own home, how you can save by getting a lower interest rate on your home. Does that help answer your question?
Great question. Additional questions? Forward, any, any questions? We've seen this all before. Thank you, Margot.
Long-range plan really quick, that'll get updated in January, again, for updated enrollment. So, then we take this information and project it forward, because now we're really, with the levy and the updated final budget, we are at a point where we're starting to talk about fifteen sixteen and beyond, and planning for next school year already. So, the enrollment will continue to plan, as you saw earlier, between a zero to one percent increase. Right now, the legislative session will be starting after the new year. It's a new funding biennium. We don't know what state aid will be. So, for the base projections, we plan for zero percent, but we also have an alternate projection where we would plan for a one percent increase in the first year of the legislative session, and a percent and a half in the second year of the legislative session. So, I did some surveying of other districts to see what their assumptions were, looked at a over twenty-year average, and some years were frozen, some years we get increases. So, special ed's going to have a major formula change, we really need to spend some more time on that. I have reductions of the one-time enhancements in fourteen fifteen, and then you can see the variety of other expenditure assumptions. And so, this chart then shows the base plan, which is highlighted in red. It shows a history of where we have been. Eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen, and thirteen, fourteen are audited numbers, those aren't going to change. And now, this reflects for fourteen fifteen are the final budget that you'll be asked to approve tonight, and then projections forward. And these are just projections, I'll continue to update. The green line is the base plan with one percent of revenue from the state, and one and a half percent from the state in year one and year two, and then some dollars for strategic plan implementation, so you can see that. And then, the kind of tan line takes that same assumption and then adds a small reduction. And the dotted blue line is the June two thousand fourteen projection. And what I really want to show there is how just an improvement or a change can help change the trajectory of that chart. And so, we did perform better in the audit, which is good. And so, you can see how that has helped us compared to where we thought we were going to be in June. Now, do we need to be mindful of a multi-year financial planning, so that as we see a downward trend in those assumptions, that we annually review this and take corrective action? Yes. But we also, we want to stay within a solid financial fund balance situation. At the same time, the intent of the fund balance isn't to grow and grow and grow to twenty-five percent or anything like that, because we do want to spend our dollars on programs for our students. So, the good news, and this is draft, I will update it again in January, so that we have a full half year of this year's enrollment, and convert that to the average daily membership. Then, we'll use the January model as our kickoff for the fifteen sixteen budgeting. Good news is, for fifteen sixteen, I think if we control adjustments or cuts, or, and control enhancements, I, I really think we, we should be in a good place. And we'll continue to have further discussion in finance and facilities, and further discussion in January. And this is just another kind of historical story on the major financial revenue and expenditure items since oh seven, oh eight on our budget. So, again, the next steps are to update it in January, and we'll move forward with a budget plan between now and March. Questions?
Thanks for all your work, and your team's work.
Thank you. I'm always glad to check this one off the list in December. And I think I do have new people to recruit behind me.
Any additional questions, anybody? Thanks, Margot. We'll go backwards in our agenda now, back to next-gen facilities.
Susan Bratt, and Margot's going to stay, and then Von Dirks, and Troy Stein, all part of the facility task force, and Troy and Von if you want to come up as well.
Sorry, I had to ask Susan Bratt and Margot Bott, Von Dirk from Old Architect is also with us, as well as Troy Stein, who's our activities director, and to go through the status of where we are with our next-generation facility plan. Take it away, Susan.
Thank you very much, school board members, Superintendent Dresson, members of the audience as well. So, hopefully they find this as stimulating as the budget and levy presentation. I've never meant that in all sincerity, clearly they were engaged. So, yes, no, see, people think bad, and I'm all over it. So, so I wanted to move forward, as you know, that we've been engaged in a facilities process study for, for quite a long time. And so, I'm just going to talk a little bit about how we got here, and then what the proposal is that the administration is bringing forward at this time. So, just a little reminder that, and as we heard about this in the work session prior to this with the, with the survey data, that our community is very much about what the program is, and so, we're really trying to tie what the facilities proposal is to where our programming is going with our next-generation Avedina Public School Strategic Plan. So, we really are trying to take what was great in the past and bring it forward to what the possibilities might be tomorrow. And our vision, obviously, as, as we all know, is not to just be an outstanding school district locally and nationally, but internationally as well, and we believe that some of the facilities proposals will help facilitate that discussion as well. We've talked a lot about how learning is our constant with our next-generation plan, and that the resources of time, talent, funds, and space are the variables, and we know that a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight is the space, but it is an integral part. There's books that have been written talking about how facilities are the third teacher, and we do believe that it can really have a great impact on student learning. So, that being said, I want to move forward with a little bit about what the concept plan is that we have tonight. As you know, we've kind of gone through three major phases with this. Phase one was sort of the research and planning phase that we've been doing for the last few years. Phase two has been the refinement of that proposal over the last couple of months, and then tonight, we're presenting our recommendation. So, the outdoor, in phase one, we started with a field study back in two thousand ten, really looking at some of our outdoor field spaces. Some of that has been looked at with some of the city's improvements to our fields as well, but we know that we have some school facilities, fields that we need to continue to look at, and that is part of our recommendation tonight. We had a facilities advisory committee made up of a few community members in two thousand twelve, thirteen, that really looked at and helped us set some standards for some of our mechanical work, as well as our internal classroom work. We've been gathering data for quite a while, as you know, looking at a demographic study that we had earlier this year. We did a community survey back in June, just sort of initially testing some of the concepts that we were thinking about. And then, we had a facilities assessment this fall that Old Architects was very involved with, with our staff, sort of seeing what are the possibilities, and then a preliminary financial analysis of what some of these items might cost. And then, in, in October, after the facilities task force concluded their work, which they obviously met through August and September, and put together some recommendations for the board and the community, and that task force was made up of twenty-four community members representing a wide array of different, from students to parents to teachers to alumni to general community members, community members who have expertise in architecture and engineering, to community members who've just been around the community for a long time. So, it was a really great task force to work with, and they presented a recommendation. Then after that point, we met with the school board, and you charged administration with putting together a plan, and that's what we're bringing forward tonight. So, since October sixth, I would say, when the facilities task force concluded their work, we've been having several school board discussions, as you know, in October. We've met two times in November, and then we met again earlier this month a few times. We've also been continuing our conversation with all of our stakeholders. So, whether those are informal discussions that U.S. board members have fielded and shared with us, just conversations out and about, lots of emails that come in to the district office and to various staff as well. We had some formal staff dialogues earlier this month that were attended, not obviously hugely attended, it's a busy time of year, but we did have several attend, and we did also send that all electronically, to which we've received good responses and feedback. We had a community forum held last Monday, in which we had about twenty-five people attend that, and again, we recorded that, so that we did, and which was interesting, because then we kind of pushed out that recording, and we received some additional feedback from that. And then we, as you said, just heard the results of a community survey earlier tonight. So, all of that tying together into our proposal that we're putting together, the first reading here being this proposal that we're bringing to you tonight, with board actions slated for early January, in order to keep that timeline going with the idea of looking at a special election on May fifth. Obviously, in between that time, we'll be doing lots of community engagement and information sharing with all of our residents and staff. So, our facilities recommendation is looking at a timeline of, we'll look at the timeline for it, the concept proposal, and then the tax impact. So, first, the timeline, and as we talked a little bit about how the recommendations will come forward, we know that now that we have no excuses absentee, we have some, voters will have an opportunity to vote beginning in mid-March, around March twentieth, I believe is the date, and then we would have that special election in May. The date, and I'm going to just move ahead here a little bit, we have a lot of questions about why May instead of November, and a couple of things. One, we've had some questions saying, is it legal for you to go in May? And it is legal, statutory, Minnesota statute allows school districts to call a special election for capital improvements or bond in non-general election dates. We hear a lot about how when we offer operating levy, we have to hold those on general election or primary election dates, with some caveats, but we don't want to be in statutory operating, so we won't go there. And then there are some construction advantages, which really does relate to the previous slide. So, assuming that we are successful, try to be positive, in November, in May, we would then move into about a three to six-month period of design, probably closer to six-month of design, in which we'll be engaging a lot of our staff and our community in what exactly that might look like. So, a lot of what we're presenting tonight will be conceptual. And then, that allows us time to do bid development and secure some contracts with construction starting in late spring, early summer twenty sixteen. If we were to go in November, all of that would essentially be pushed back a year, for as we know, construction seasons in Minnesota are rather compressed, so we're trying to take advantage of that. So, we're trying to design, as you said, for the next generation, trying to get a variety of learning spaces. We're not saying we're going to be able to redo everything in our schools, nor do we want to do everything in our schools. For some students, that direct instruction is the best learning environment for them in a traditional classroom. But we know that we need to be able to personalize learning for all of our learners. So, what do we mean when we talk about next-generation learning spaces? So, we really look at that in four different groups. We have, so we want to create different learning spaces, and learn, really do that complement our current spaces. We've talked a lot in different presentations about cells and all, how our, our schools were developed for a different time, for a different type of instruction, basically the listening and direct instruction, and while there is a time for that, not all learning takes place in that traditional classroom. But that is the direct instruction that we want to continue to have. We also want to be able to offer a lot of, some more small group instruction, and small group learning, some time, times and spaces where small groups can get together and collaborate. And when we talk about learners, we really are talking about our adults as well, so I don't only want to talk about students. Our individual learning spaces, we know that sometimes a student might need, or a learner might need, just that private space to work on something, or to create something, or to reflect on what they've been learning. And then we know that we need some large group performance space as well, so that students can demonstrate what they've learned. So, our proposal is really kind of divided into two chunks. We're looking at next-generation learning spaces, that becoming the larger part of about a hundred and seven million dollars, and really looking at that birth through grade twelve. And that is aligned with our strategic plan, which, as you know, we have our birth-to-grade five study and our secondary study. So, looking at, I'll go into a little bit more detail with each of these. Excuse me, fighting a little bit of the illness that apparently is going around. The early childhood program, we really are trying to create those spaces that help prepare our students for kindergarten, and then at elementary, middle, and high school, trying to create those next generations, those variety of spaces for personalized learning. The early childhood, we're looking at this building here at the Avedina Community Center, the first floor, kind of reconfiguring that into being a more early childhood center-focused, really building on that collaboration that's already there with ECFE and ECSE and our school readiness programs, but having an opportunity to expand our three- and four-year-old programs, so that we can make sure that there's access for everybody. But that's not saying that we're going to take over all preschool programs, we want to make sure that we're continuing our partnerships with our community-based early childhood programs as well. And then as part of that, we want to be able to add some enhanced safety and security downstairs in the first floor for those, for those young learners, and trying to create. And most of the time, when we talk about enhanced safety and security at the building level, we're trying to create a controlled access. So, right now, as you know, when you come into the community center, there's several doors that you come into, and we're really trying to save, maybe there's a primary door that you come into for the early childhood center. If you're trying to go up to the third floor for some community learning, maybe that would be a different door, and just trying to help. be a different door, and just trying to help provide some direction for people. For the elementary concept proposal, we want to run it and construct learning spaces that do really allow for those variety of spaces. So what does that mean? We're looking at a variety of small group, large group spaces. We're looking at media center improvements, and this doesn't just mean we're going to take over the current space. We're looking at how do we maybe incorporate some hallroom space in taking out some of those walls, taking out some of the stacks where there's currently books. We still will have books, but how are those laid out? And how do we create some real, moving from a traditional media center into places that are more based on creativity and creating products? We want some additional learning spaces that can do for some specialized program. We know that we have some needs in our special education programming, some site-based special education program, but we're also looking at spaces that could provide some equity between our elementary schools. Some of our schools have more space for different specialist programs, like physical education, or music, or art. And so we want to make sure that we're providing a little bit more equity between our buildings for that. We do want to have some adaptable furniture improvements. A lot of our furniture right now is more traditional, just a table and a chair, or a simple desk. And we want to be able to have some more flexibility, literally moving some of those chairs so that they can create those different sorts of small group, individual, large group more easily. As the survey indicated, we're not looking at buying lazy boys, we're looking at buying a variety of instructional spaces. And if you've been in a few of our classrooms, particularly, I know of a classroom over at Concord where she got a grant to do some of that, and the schools, the furniture are much more conducive to a variety of learning styles. We're also looking at some outdoor learning space improvements, potentially some playground improvements or other outdoor learning areas in classrooms. And then again, the building safety improvements. At every one of our elementary schools, we know that we have a need to do some more controlled access, and so that'll basically entail some office renovations, so that everybody would come into the building and enter through, during the school day, would enter through that main office space. The middle school proposal, we're looking at, would be improvements to really facilitate. We're looking at, as you know, moving to that more of a grade six through eight integrated middle school concept. And in order to do that, we have the availability of, because we would be moving to a 912 high school concept, we have the ability to look at the existing spaces in the middle school that most of our ninth grade classrooms are in, and trying to create some different kinds of learning labs or spaces. And so again, just as with the elementary, looking at creating some, a variety of instructional spaces, continuing some of the direct instruction, looking at some individual, small group, large group spaces, media center as well, taking some of those current ninth grade spaces and perhaps expanding some of the Project Lead the Way or other STEM spaces, or other learning lab spaces, some world language, or other needs for larger group learning spaces. Again, some specialized programming and special education programming needs, creating some student commons areas. Once they get to middle school, there's kind of a need to kind of group a little bit. And Valley View has a little bit of that right now. Southview really doesn't have a student commons kind of area. And again, trying to build some safety improvements in with the main office configuration. At Southview in particular, that would probably mean moving from the north side to the south side of the building, thank you, directionally challenged today, to where the bigger parking lot is, and most people are actually coming into the facility there. So really trying to think of that office space differently. At the high school, we know that we're going to need to do some expansion on the campus to allow for some additional students with the grade nine coming over in the future. We know that we're going to want to continue as with the other ones, with some instructional spaces and media center improvements, looking at other ways to expand STEM, and just like the other ones, with some office improvements. I know that the board did receive some recommendations over the weekend to possibly how they could look at some of those STEM spaces differently. And certainly, that's part of the concept. We haven't gotten to that design phase of looking for exactly where all of those things are. Originally, we were thinking, you know, we might be looking at an addition maybe on the east side, but potentially, depending on when the design kind of looks out from square footage-wise, we believe the concept proposal that we have put together would allow us for some flexibility with that. And when I go through all this, we can certainly ask some more questions. Then we have the Multipurpose Activity Center. We've had a lot of discussion over that in the last few months, as you know. We do believe that there is a need for a variety, to construct a space, that Multipurpose Activity Center, whatever we end up landing and calling that, but I think it is really about creating a variety of learning, academic, and athletic activity space. And so depending on what the activity is, and using activity in the broadest sense of the word, it could be curricular. We know that we're going to have to have some additional physical education, health, wellness, curricular spaces. We also know that we're going to need some hands-on learning spaces at the high school in a larger group setting. So how do we facilitate that with some extra space? We know that we're going to have some co-curricular needs, both activity and athletic, so trying to create some spaces for that. And it's not just for the high school. We know that by freeing up some of those gyms at the middle school, that gives them more opportunities to have some co-curricular experiences as well, because currently, those middle school gyms are taken over by high school activities after school. And then we want to make sure that these are, continue to be community-based facilities. And so whatever we do, we're going to look at, how can we bring the community into our schools? This is a large investment that the community is making in them. And also, with that, improve some accessibility concerns that we have, just trying to get to some of our lower fields and spaces at the school. The other part of our recommendation here is for district infrastructure. And I will note, so we have some additional site-based security enhancements that would be in addition to those that we talked about with the centralized access at all of our sites, but that would include cameras and technologies. And I did a little math, and when you start pulling out that part in those elementary, middle school, and high school proposals, in total, you're looking at $2 million plus maybe an additional 4.5, that would all be about safety and security when you look at office reconfigurations. We're looking at some outdoor athletic space enhancements. Currently, as you know, with Edina, we are pretty landlocked. We don't have a lot of extra green space to go and buy, and so we're looking at ways that we could create safer playing surfaces. Our current athletic fields and activity fields that are outside are pretty well-worn, and that's because they're used a lot. And we hear that a lot from our community. We also hear that from our schools, that we know that they're pretty worn. So we want to be able to provide some additional safety with that in renovation of those, putting in some artificial turf with some. We also believe that our tennis courts at the high school are, need some repair, so we could upgrade those as well. Some improved access to parking with some of these new improvements that we're doing. We're going to look at some traffic flow and how we can improve some parking with that, particularly over at the west campus. And then also looking at a transportation facility that could replace the current site that we have, and allow us to potentially expand our current fleet, our current fleet of school buses. You know that we contract out because we don't have enough buses for everything. We also don't have enough space at our current facility to house all of those buses. So we'd be looking at, trying to construct a new facility, which a portion of that cost could be offset by the sale of the current property. So from a financing standpoint, as we said, we're looking at about $124.9 million in a total proposal. We believe that with the, as we've been having these conversations over the last several months, and was confirmed with the survey tonight, we believe that that is a palatable number with our community. We understand that that is a tax impact, but believe that with appropriate messaging and information sharing, that we will be able to bring the community along. The average tax impact, or the estimated tax impact at this point, we'd be looking at that 27, right here with the $27 a month, or about $357, $324 a year would be the average on a $400,000 home, which is the average in the community of Edina. And when we look back at what the, our bond referendum from 10 years ago, we have a tendency to go out about every 10 years to keep our facilities up to date. And that is roughly equivalent to what the increase was about 10 years ago when you factor in inflation. So at this point, that's our administrative recommendation, and we will entertain questions.
Do you have questions?
We reviewed this information and discussed it a number of times. Go ahead, Lenny.
So I've got three different questions, none of which I'm looking for answers tonight. They're more just kind of things that have come up recently, that if you can kind of give some thought to and give feedback. The first question you referenced that we received communication recently from a group that talks about Project Lead the Way, robotics, and theater, and they expressed some reservations, I think, about how the Activity Center, as it's currently drawn, fits in with what they think they need. And I'm not saying that we're designing for them. And then they have an alternate proposal that seems completely different. So I'm just looking for some feedback at a later point about how their comments fit in with what our plans are. So that's area number one. And if you know the answer, feel free, but given that the question came up tonight, I'm fine with a later answer.
I speak to that.
Okay.
In the proposal, what you have right now are more diagrams, and they're illustrating ways to arrive at a budget or an estimate. With the passage of a referendum, we go through an entire design process where we investigate a number of different issues around each of them, develop criteria, and arrive at the right solution. What they presented had both needs addressed in it, as well as proposed solutions. And some of the proposed solutions are just not physically possible, for example, adding a second story. But the need is still relevant. And so we would look at those needs, and where it ends up in the building would be part of that design process. It may be near where the existing Project Lead the Way is. We might end up moving Project Lead the Way at a different point in the building. And so the design process would put those things in the right area. I think the idea of adding it to the west side of the building is one that has a lot of validity to it. It makes sense. And so we'd look at all of that with the proposed solution that would come out of that design process. Right now, though, I believe we have adequate dollars in the budget to be able to address those concerns and needs.
So when we talk about the Activity Center, it won't necessarily house Project Lead the Way and robotics. It may be that that frees up space where we can put it more on the west side of the building.
If that's the right solution through the design process, absolutely.
Okay. Second question. We got correspondence in the last couple of weeks from, I think it was Dave Henderson, saying that he was wondering if we bring the ninth grade over to the high school, what is our capacity for orchestra, for band? And I don't remember that being discussed in terms of classroom space for those particular programs.
And for that, I think it would relate to, we know that we're going to need some, we said, as you said, with the addition that we're talking about at the high school, we didn't say specifically what kinds of classrooms. We know that we're just going to need some additional instructional spaces. And so in the design, we would take a look at our current music classroom offerings, as well as what other music classroom offerings might be part of that additional, you know, we said we would need, what, 28 to 30 additional instructional spaces with the addition with bringing over the ninth grade. So we believe that that would be encompassed in that somehow.
And that again may-
But I can't say for sure that there's going to be an additional music classroom. We might reconfigure what's currently there.
And that might, might again be reallocation of space, because we have an area that already has a band room and an orchestra. And so to then create another separate area in the new wouldn't necessarily flow.
Right. And I think it's important to remember that whatever that new space is, it could be part on the east side, part on the west side. You know, we've shown potential offerings that we've had it all kind of in one space, but that's not necessarily where we're sold. We would do some more design work and some more investigation into where the appropriate spaces are for which curricular areas, and how to really create a space at the high school that is conducive to all the learning options there.
And then my third area, and actually, it's great that you've got answers to these. But the third area was, I remember getting an email stating that there was a projection of about a billion dollars' worth of construction that may be hitting in 2016. I think that as we go through this planning process, we want to at some point set up a ranking system. If we find come 2016 that whatever amount that we have allocated isn't going to work, because as in this year, we saw a 20% increase in bids based upon higher construction levels. If we run into that, we'll need to know before we start digging what our priorities are.
And I think that's a valid point. We certainly would put that, when we get to that design, what are the priorities, when we can put those in? And just to clarify, when you said a billion-dollar construction for those people out there, we're not talking about a billion dollars here. We're just talking about in general, in the state of Minnesota, we know there's a lot of construction going on. So absolutely, that would be part of the design, and we would rely on experts, you know, like Von with Will, to say, okay, what does the climate look like? What are we potentially looking at with instruction options?
There's a few things that are already working in your favor. There's a few districts that have slid their proposals from May to November, so the billion dollars is starting to lower a little bit, which will help balance that. And you also, as opposed to the last few summers where we've been looking at very tight summer construction windows, there's a lot of work here that would happen during the school year as well. And so we'll be able to adjust when our bidding schedules are, when the construction schedules are, to take advantage of the best pricing.
Good question. Any additional questions, comments? We have an audience member back there with a question.
All of this, like, how much, so this would all happen during the school, during some of the school year, right?
The question is about kind of the timing of when the construction would happen? Is that your question? Yes, some of it, it would probably be over a course of about two years. So a lot of it would happen, a lot of the construction would happen during the summer, the spring and summer and early fall, just because of the weather in Minnesota. But as Von mentioned, we could do some stuff outside of the, you know, that wouldn't directly influence what's going on in the schools. So it'd be like 2016 and 2017, we'd be looking at two years of construction.
Does that answer your question? Additional questions?
I have a question. Did you say you had a survey of the Creek Valley area? Was it, was it live?
Right. So the survey, we just got the results about two hours ago. So it was presented in the work session prior to this, and we certainly will be putting that up for the public to view. But yes, it was a residential scientific sample poll that was done of the community, so a 400 random sample survey. Did you have specific questions about the survey, or?
I'm curious, so you might be able to serve here to, the Valley State neighborhood, the, there's a Creek Valley road that goes to our neighborhood, to the high school, between Creek Valley Elementary School and High School. There's no sidewalks, so all the kids walk in the street. And my kids walk the street every day. And there was some talk about starting to lock the foot-in, or through a street, Creek Valley, so they'll probably be leasing, or they're tracing, is how I heard of it. But I don't, I know nothing set in stone, but I'm just kind of curious if that's an option, because it's kind of a safety concern for the neighborhood.
So just repeat the question. There's, as a member of, what's it?
Valley State.
Around Creek Valley Elementary School, okay.
Right, clean out the high school in the Creek Valley.
So the neighborhood right around the Creek Valley Elementary, to the west of the high school there, just having some questions about a potential through road.
So where we are is, this kind of was our first launch step. I mean, we've been doing a lot of study, but this is our first reading. So our next step will be to contact, to be in touch with the neighborhood that, as we get into this project, to have more discussion with them in that design process, be it at the high school, which we recognize, a couple of different areas, but even at some of our elementary schools. So that we'll be in touch with the neighbors to say, here's what we're looking at, here's how it's pursuing, so that we do have that dialogue and discussion. So we know that will be a next step that we take right away in 2015. We're going to wait through the winter break time, but we do have a plan in place specifically for a couple of our neighborhoods where we want to be engaged with dialogue around that.
Still a question along those lines. So you mentioned that you are going to do some public discussion, January through March, assuming that's what you're referring to. Is there information that's publicly available now? Because it looks like there's a lot of work, a lot of planning, and you've got some pretty good ideas, but I couldn't find anything.
So let Susan repeat the question.
So the question being about what specifically has been made public as far as the proposals at this point. So at this point, there's just been a lot of proposals. This is the first time we're actually putting it into a recommendation, so we've looked at a bunch of different things. I don't, other than, perhaps, on the website, we have some conceptual drawings of what we potentially could be looking at, and so I can meet with you and show you where some of that information is, certainly. But again, you know, we don't, we don't have any definitive answers as to which they are, but we, as Dr. Dresden said, we are looking at some more community conversations in January.
Okay, well, that'd be great. And also, the second question is, has any work been done yet with respect to the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods? So, you're saying, $125 million, so for this, you're saying, that's, that's our, our-
So some questions on the impact of the neighborhoods. Yes, we've been having, we've been researching what those are, and then again, we would be having those discussions with the neighborhoods. We're also looking at conversations with Watershed District and, what's the other one?
Three Rivers.
Three Rivers. So a lot of those kinds of initial talking with the city about what kinds of options are available, so absolutely.
That'd be great, because it seems like you're waiting out, out here, to, to, to work on, maybe- That'd be great because it seems like you're waiting out, out here, you know, while everyone's making, you know, spending, uh, really publicly, we heard talking about this.
Yep. So it's coming. Yep. Yep.
Absolutely. And we hear those concerns and we want to make sure that we have dialogues with you.
Susan, can I just add there, when the Facilities Task Force was meeting, there actually were quite a lot of materials on the website that are still there. So there's not final materials, but there's, there's quite a bit of information and all of the meetings were public and announced.
Was any, was, that's great. Was any notification given to the neighborhood that this was going on?
Well.
I'm sorry, I'll check the website.
Sure. Through, through the school district publications, I think there were announcements.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we made any, we didn't make any public announcements about specific proposal plans, but all of the Facility Task Force information has been online. Every meeting, we would put up all the materials. Everything that the task force saw is public information as well. And that's all on our website.
And Susan will get, make a connection with you before you take off tonight. It'd be great.
Additional questions? Go ahead.
Okay. So you were talking about tennis courts coming out? And I was just like, I was just like wondering like when that might be and what else would happen.
When do you graduate?
At 2018.
Okay. So we have a question about the tennis courts specifically. We were looking at the tennis courts over on the west campus for the high school. So, uh, yeah, not the ones here at the east campus, but the ones that are down the hill behind the, yeah. So those probably wouldn't maybe be ready in 2017, yeah, maybe before you graduate?
Most graduates.
But not here at the east campus, those tennis courts are staying.
Additional questions? Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, team.
So we've got two minor tweaks to the agenda. The first one is Rick's going to forego his leadership update tonight, just in the interest of time. And the second one, if I could get a motion to move the course offering changes, item G, um, under action items, to item D under discussion. It is a discussion item tonight, was just incorrectly placed on the agenda.
So moved to move G?
Second.
There we go.
The second is to move item G course offerings from the action portion to the discussion portion under section D of tonight's agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of removing the agenda as indicated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have an adjusted agenda. Next item is our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to bring our consent agenda for the floor for approval. Dr. Dresden, you want to walk us through, please?
I certainly will. We have our personnel recommendations. Within those personnel recommendations, we are accepting a letter of resignation from Dr. Chad Schmidt, our Director of Research and Evaluation. This is Chad's last meeting and we'll acknowledge that at the end of the meeting, but we are accepting that. We also have an interim plan in place where our current data coordinator, data analysis coordinator, Susan Tennyson, will step into that role of interim Director of Research and Evaluation. And we'll continue to make those plans go forward, but that will occur effective 2015. We do have expenditures to payable. We have a partnership for our professional learning activity occurring later this school year. We have some commendations as well as approval of some field trips. And then the gifts again from the community. And that would conclude our consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Rick. Any items anybody would like removed from the consent agenda? Sign down. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now to our action portion of this evening's meeting. First up is the final tax levy for 12 payable 15, I'm sorry, for 14 payable 15. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final tax levy for 2014, payable 2015. And the taxes will support the 2015-16 school year. We did have a presentation earlier this evening. This has gone through finance a number of times. Any discussion, questions or comments? Thank you, Margot, for your next presentation. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I have nothing else. I'll just answer any questions that you, if you thought of something else after the presentation, so.
Questions, comments? Sign down. All those in favor of approving the final tax levy as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the 14-15 final budget, which was also presented earlier. Can I have a motion to bring that one to the floor?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. You'll have to flip a coin, Sarah, to figure out who to move first. Again, we have the final budget on the floor. Any discussion? We did hear about this earlier this evening. Any questions? Sign down. All those in favor of approving the 14-15 final budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is our alternative facility bonds. It's ratifying the sale, describing the form in details and providing the payment of the $6 million general obligation alternative facility bond, series 14A. Any motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, background?
At the November meeting, you approved the authorization to proceed with issuing the alternative facilities bonds and also designating authority to myself and Board Treasurer Lenny Wallen-Friedman to be able to respond to bids on the opening day of December 3rd. I'm happy to report we had nine bidders and the rate was very favorable, lower than projections. And because it was lower than projections, we will save almost a half a million dollars over the life of the bonds, which is good. And so this is just ratifying the approval that we took on December 3rd.
Questions, comments? So can you clarify the half million dollars saving is rec, savings is recognized, why?
The initial projections for the bond because we, yeah, from the initial, um, because we don't know, you know, what interest rates are going to be and how competitive the environment is, so.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Additional questions or comments? Facilities did see this, I'm guessing? Seeing no additional questions or comments, all those in favor of ratifying the award of the sale of describing the form and details and providing the payment of $6 million, $50,000 general obligation alternative facilities bonds? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion opposed. Next up is our property liability insurance. Can I have a motion, please, to bring that one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Second is the approval of the property liability insurance. Margot, a little background, please.
So we had our current agent, Marsh McClellan, conduct quotes for us. And with six companies, four companies did decline. We did have two companies bid, so we have those results. The successful vendor was our current vendor of WRM America. At the same time, we also researched insurance pool, benefit, self-insurance cooperative that 15 districts belong to. There's another pool that four districts belong to. Finance and Facilities had a presentation in September. And looking at that insurance pool called MIST, we, we are recommending that we move towards joining the MIST self-insurance pool. It's actually a slight decrease from what we're currently paying. We have a decrease in deductible and some expanded coverages in some areas that we currently do not have. We have been pleased with our current agent and current provider. However, we think this will be a move in the right direction for us. This is a new opportunity that has just become available for districts within the last couple of years.
Questions or comments?
Can we discuss this at Finance and Facilities?
And so the advantages of having the lower deductible and some increased prop, some increased coverages offsets in our minds, the greater premium decrease we would have had with going with our regular carrier.
Yes. And also the comparison that is attached in your board packet includes a contribution into a loss fund. And that, because of the pool, that helps with the smaller claims. All districts contribute that. If there's anything remaining in the last run, loss fund at the end, it's redistributed amongst the districts. And so in a worst case scenario, we won't get any back, but, you know, we may, from what I'm hearing from the other districts that are participating, you do get some back. And so to be conservative with the comparison that's in your board packet, I assumed we wouldn't get any back, but I'm hopeful that, you know, some years we would get a little something back.
Okay, thank you.
And our current deductible is still at 50,000? It'll go to 25?
It'll go to 25. And actually, we, in working with the MIST representative, he's, they are actually on a fiscal year cycle. So July 1, he's hopeful we can even lower that more for our district below the 25,000.
Additional questions or comments? And what's our claims history, last several years? Have we had any claims?
Uh, we have had not a sizable, really large claims. You know, three, four years ago, we had the bus garage fire and the ECC gym floor flooding. So we had some larger claims. We have had, you know, we'll have an occasional vehicle accident or something like that. But we've had smaller claims in the last couple of years, I'm happy to report. And once those larger claims get off our history, that's certainly going to help us too. That would help, help us with any insurance company.
Excellent. Thanks for that background. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving, awarding the property liability insurance contract to MIST, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have workers' compensation insurance. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor, please?
Some moved. Second.
It's been seconded to award the extension of the workers' comp insurance contract with risk from January 2015 to June 2015. Again, a little background, Margot, please.
The annual cycle for workers' comp historically has been a July 1 to June 30 renewal. We've been working in Finance and Facilities to try to get that aligned to property liability at January 1, which we have done. But now that the approval is to go with MIST, their renewal is a July 1 to June 30. So the recommendation from myself and also Finance and Facilities is to have workers' comp remain on a July 1, June 30. So now what we officially need to do is approve another six months with them. The carrier has been great. Basically, they, they're taking their annual cost and dividing it by two. I mean, they're just going to keep us on. And then we will have a bid or quote process like we always do in May and June and come forward with workers' comp renewal for you.
And it's a reduction of 16%?
That's what it was from July. There's, there's no change. I mean, when we renewed in July for the six months and they also at that time gave us a 12-month quote. And so we're just, I, I want to make sure I have the official approval to do a six-month contract with them. And then I'm expecting a, hopefully, a continued decrease because we have some higher claims there that are also coming off workers' comp. So hopefully at July 1, we'll have even more favorable news.
Excellent. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the workers' compensation insurance extension from January 1 through June 30, 2015, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have, next up, our guiding change document for community ed. Can I have a motion to bring that one to the floor?
Some moved, second.
Moved and seconded, the improvement catchback change plan, Community Education Services. Val, a little background, please?
Sure. This is the beginning of a three-phase plan that we'll be bringing forward to you, our operational plan in May. We began last week with 18 people, some of our colleagues here, principals, staff, community ed services, board, chamber, city parks, a really nice broad-based group of folks. We did an environmental scan. We looked at key trends and influences and looked at what's happening legislatively and around the nation. And we'll continue on this week with the second part of phase one. Anything else I can answer for you?
So, any questions or comments?
Are there any highlights?
Are there any highlights of what you're most looking forward to as part of your study? I think there was really keen recognition about how we're really poised to help leverage all the supports internally with the district and also externally with our community and chamber and park and recs and with the visioning at the city and with the park and rec plan moving forward. It's, it's really, really key timing on this, so.
Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Val, just remind me of the timeline here you're under.
Sure. We finish phase one next week. Then we move into our portfolio assessment in February, getting an update on that to you. And then we will be doing our operational plan in late March and coming to the board to have you review that in May.
Thanks, Val. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the guiding change document for community ed service planning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is our American Indian Education Parent Committee. Can I have a motion to bring that one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the parent committee resolution for American Indian education, Indiana Public School. This is under Minnesota State statute. Anybody would like to provide some input?
Yes. We are required by law, if we have 10 or more American Indian students enrolled in our district, to establish a parent committee. We have a small number of students enrolled, American Indian students, and we now have a group of parents that are willing, that are willing to come forward and be part of a committee to look at how we're serving our American Indian students.
Mary, could you outline briefly how that committees, their comments and discussion can be aligned with some of the other committee work happening in the district?
So I think, so I think one of the pieces that we will do is how can we align that with our district equity advisory council committee? How, how can we get that to be a stronger representation? Have those parents have a stronger voice within our school community?
Additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
All those in favor of approving the American Indian Education Parent Committee as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have two groups of policies. The first one is revised personnel policy 421. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve revised policy 421, gifts to employees. We discussed this at a previous meeting. Any changes to what we saw in this at our prior review last month?
Yes, we do have, since last month, we had some small revisions at our November 20 meeting in Roman numeral two, paragraph F, and then also in 3B. Basically, it's just providing some balance to the recommendations regarding guidelines for not only receiving a gift but also making a gift and definition of local official.
Thank you, Regina, for that update. Any additional questions or comments regarding policy 421? Sign down. All those in favor of approving the revised policy 421, gifts to employees as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our schedule reveal, policies 508, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 35. Can I have a motion to bring those to the floor?
So moved, second.
It's moved and seconded to bring our 500-series policies to the floor. We have, again, reviewed these updates last month. Any major additions or changes from when we saw these?
There are no major changes. The majority of the policies have no language changes at all since our discussion in November. There are a couple of exceptions. There are a couple of exceptions in policy five twenty-six, student hazing. There is some adjustment of language in paragraph five C, and then likewise, just taking a look at five thirty-five, Kathy kindly reviewed this one in reference to federal law and aligned it with the statutes in place and took a look at the superintendent language and found out that this is indeed the correct statute language for the superintendent managing this particular policy regarding education of homeless children.
Thank you, Regina, for the update, and thanks to the policy committee for all their work. Any additional comments or questions related to these five hundred series policies? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving these five hundred series policies as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for our action portion this evening. Next up, we're off to next-gen facilities.
For the discussion portion? Correct.
Yeah, for discussion, yep. What are we thinking here? Questions, comments?
I would just, I would say that this would, you know, entertain questions and comments. We don't have more to present than what was based earlier today, but if you have more questions.
We have this whole document that provides all the background information, which was presented in the slide, as well as the actual language that would be part of the resolution moving forward. So it's really two parts in that discussion item, both the concept proposal as well as the referendum authorization. So those are the two documents that are included. We've worked with legal counsel on this. This is very, this language gets very formal as we get closer to that decision point, and that would be the information, the proposal, the information being brought to the board for action and the word of support going forward at the January twelfth board meeting.
I had a couple of questions or, I guess, comments. One, I had to leave a little early last time we talked about this, so on the transportation or the bus garage, we don't have it, you know, broken out specifically into how much we're associating dollars with each project, and I'm wondering if we landed on any estimate on that, or if that would become lower priority as we move forward in terms of, you know, if we ran out of dollars in this portion.
So I'll start, and then we can kind of build it up from the rest of the staff. I think where it is, it's, you know, it's a dollar amount, it's a negotiated item because we're looking at a possible land purchase.
I'm sorry, I will repeat that, try again. So it's a, it's a flat-dollar amount because we're looking at a variety of options, we're looking at a possible land purchase, we're thinking our land is worth some significant dollars for its location as well, so it is a holding spot number. We're looking just at options that we have available, and then we would pursue that as we move down the road. That wouldn't be on a tighter timetable as the construction project would be.
And I guess my other comment, overall, I, I do have a little concern around the referendum being held in May in terms of the cost. I think there had been some previous confusion on the actual cost of running an election, and it was, it became clear that it is the hundred thousand dollar cost, and I guess I just look at, you know, trying to offset that with, you know, what that would equate to in terms of FTEs, and, you know, sometimes I worry that it's, you know, I want to make sure the public has enough time to be fully educated on where we're going with this, and I do understand the, the constraints around trying to get planning done in enough time to hopefully break ground by two thousand sixteen, but I also balance that with making sure that people know what's going on before May, and that, you know, it is, it's a hundred thousand dollar cost, and we're going to be having election November, so it's a concern.
Yeah, and I think we've weighed that out. I mean, I think that's, in ministry, we've looked at that as well, but again, that advantage of that, getting everything to happen a year early was one of the big discussions that we've had at work sessions as well, and I think that's why we're bringing it forward for a May vote.
If I may add too, I also believe that there is momentum going with the task force and the conversations that we're having with the community, and I believe that to continue that throughout the spring, it does align with our other strategic plans and programs, and I believe that it will be a good thing to be able to have in May and then have the summer and the fall to really have those design discussions when people are ready enough to go back to school and think about what they might want to do.
I would just comment to say thank you. You guys have worked for many months on this. It's been really hard. You've involved the community in a great way. I think the mail we're all receiving shows how much excitement there is around this. You're going to have a lot of work, you know, trying to reconcile everyone's needs and come up with the ultimate right design, but I'm, you know, have every belief you can do that, and I just think this is a tremendous project, and thank you.
So I have a couple of comments. One, I mean, I started with some significant reservations about the activity center. I will say that, or the, the area that we're building. You what? The multipurpose facility. I will say at this point that I look at it and I look at what the cost would be to me as a taxpayer, and in light of the whole package, I probably do lean towards being in favor of it at this point. I also want to point out to anybody who's watching that we have had five or six work sessions. We have probably spent, as a board, ten or twelve or more hours talking about this, and so if you don't see a lot of discussion tonight between us, I can tell you that it's been easily more than ten hours of discussion. I'm sure Susan could tell you the exact number, and this has gone through many iterations, and so don't take the level of discussion today as the level of discussion of the board on this particular project.
What I would like to add to the comments that Lenny made is appreciation for the alignment of the facilities discussion with the next-generation research that started in the district in earnest in two thousand twelve and has also had many hours of not only board discussion but community input, staff discussion, staff presentation, and I have greatly valued as a board member hearing from staff, students, community as to what direction is best for education, and recognizing the fact that there are some needs that are different than what our facilities are designed to accommodate. So I've appreciated that alignment, and that's, that's two years of background, that it's, it's a lot to try to continue to package that, but we have this exciting opportunity right now to say, well, what does that look like in something tangible? We've been talking about education and concept, and now we have this opportunity that really hasn't been present in the district in over ten years, to look at our facilities. They are solid facilities, but they are also older facilities. They were built in an era when education did look different, and so we are blessed with a unique opportunity right now.
Additional questions or comments? Thank everybody for the tremendous amount of work and the facility task force, FATF, the, it's getting late, and all their work in the community and the, really, the way they came together to really debate and think about, you know, how do we, how do we move this forward and how do we meet the needs of our kids over the next twenty to fifty years? So I think this is a great opportunity. Additional discussion or questions? This will come up for January twelfth for approval. I'm sure we'll have some discussion between now and then as well.
Can I just, to everyone watching, just to take time if you can, I know it's very busy in the next couple of weeks, but to go on the website and sort of look at the history of what we've done and try to get some background and develop questions or thoughts or strengths, or, we had a SWOT analysis done at the forum, and I thought that was helpful, but I'm hoping more people will look into that so we can actually hear from everyone about what their thoughts, because it is a community effort.
Just to define SWOT, because it's a good, it's a great, it's a great term.
Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, with threats.
And threats.
Thank you. We did a cost and one sort of benefit.
Pros and cons.
Pros and cons analysis.
And Lucy, you referencing the, sorry, the forum from Monday evening?
Yes.
Last Monday evening.
Any other questions or comments? Everybody's comfortable with the ballot language as well? Opposed ballot language? So it'll come up January as well.
And that's, I mean, I'm assuming that's based, that's based in law, how we'd phrase that? Is that correct, Margot and Susan?
Correct, and it's, it's pretty rigid in how they describe that.
What they allow us, yeah.
Yeah, there's very little flexibility. You can tweak the description just a little bit, but you, you want to stick as closely as you can to the regular ballot language, and, again, most of it's prescribed by statute, so.
Excellent. Unless there's anybody who wants additional, has additional questions or comments, we'll move on to our next item, which is the fifteen sixteen calendar. We'd like to start. Gwen's favorite hobby, creating a calendar.
Yes, it is. This year, we had the great fortune of working with thirteen other staff, parents, and administrators, and we also looked at some data, so we did a survey of the parents and students and staff in early October to get their feedback around a number of questions pertaining to the calendar, and we, they had a lot to share. We had almost nineteen hundred responses in the week and a half that we had to survey out. So our committee looked at the survey results, and from there, we came up with two calendar options that were then presented to staff to vote on. And the calendar that you have before you this evening is the calendar that had fifty-four percent of the votes of those who voted, so it was a preferred calendar. And the feeling is, is that based on the survey we received, survey information we received, people were very much interested in two weeks of winter break and one week of spring break, and also great interest in having the professional development, learning opportunities spread throughout the course of the school year. And the other thing that people really liked was it was really split right down the middle between late starts and early releases, so the calendar committee did the noble thing by having two early starts and two late releases to better meet the needs of people. So, all in all, we feel that this is the best proposal for the coming school year. We also are continuing to look at ways that other districts around the world and around the country are looking at time and educating students, and so our committee is wanting to continue meet, to meet, actually, next month, to begin looking at the calendar for two thousand sixteen through two thousand eighteen. So I will entertain any questions. And I'll also offer any additional comments from my colleague, Randy.
I know that this year at the high school, we went to doing, ending the first semester before the winter break and doing finals then, and so I guess students will be in finals this week as a matter of fact. But I note on this calendar, when it looks like semester one is not ending until quite late in January, so we're not, we're not trying to end it before the winter break again or that wasn't possible, or could you walk me through that?
Sure. So we had a lot of conversations about that at the committee level, and there is great interest in giving students a natural break and having finals just before winter break, and then they really get a full two weeks of time off. The flip side of that is that if you are teaching a course that is a semester-long course, such as an elective, it's important for first semester to be very similar to second semester, and as we looked at different calendar variations, there were huge gaps between the number of days, as many as twenty-five to twenty-nine days, and teachers had a lot of conversation about that, especially at the middle school and high school level, where it's very difficult to create a, two courses for each semester that, or a course for each semester that is very similar in nature, but with that much time difference between the two. So there was a lot of discussion, especially, like I said, at the middle school and high school level, and the decision was, even though it sounds good for students to have that natural break, we felt it was more important for the semesters to be equal.
Thank you.
Well, we might also, excuse me, but we asked, it was directed by the board that we would begin school a week before Labor Day, and maybe if you can replay that a little bit as far as the rationale that was?
Yes, one of the reasons that we're able to begin school before Labor Day is because of the fact that we have over ten million dollars' worth of construction that will take place next school year, and we have worked with the, the Department of Education to make sure that we are following the appropriate channels, or going through the appropriate channels for that to be permissible, and so each year, we will need to send a letter indicating that we will start school before Labor Day, and here are the reasons why, and here are the costs, which is what we did for this school year.
If I can just add to that a little bit, just because we, the board actually had a fairly lengthy discussion of this issue earlier in the year at a meeting where the audio went out, and so there was no public record of, of our rationale.
Right.
So this seems like a great time to recap. There was discussion of the construction, which is going to go on for a number of years with between alt facilities and the potential referendum. We were advised that there is a real opportunity to potentially save money by being able to start construction earlier in the year and get bids out early. We were also advised that preserving the flexibility to start some years early or late will help in construction schedules. Labor Day's late next year. If we did a post-Labor Day, we would have had a very long summer this summer. So there were lots of construction-related rationales to, again, start before Labor Day. I think we all acknowledged, we heard a lot from the public, there are people who like this, there are people who don't. We wanted to have at least a full year of data as to how it worked out. Ultimately, whether it's good for construction or not, I think the board intends to always be balancing the costs and benefits of starting before Labor Day, and folks can correct me, I can't really speak for anyone but myself on how I was thinking this through, but I think this was uniform. We'll continue to balance costs and benefits as we know more, but it was, I think, a fairly easy decision that it made sense for the two thousand fifteen sixteen year.
So as a follow-up to that, I think that what happens is, once you determine that the construction presents a benefit, then the question that came before the board was, so what's the impact on education? And so I think that that was the second part that we walked through, and the recommendation from administration, the information we got, all said that if we start early, it gives us more flexibility in creating the calendar for teacher development days, day-to-days. It allows us to get more days of school in prior to the testing that all the kids are taking in the spring, and so I think that once we looked at the construction, said it was okay, that we know there's going to be some negative impact, what's the weighing when we look at the actual academic, and that fell on the side of it's a positive academic impact, and I think, again, I don't speak for the board, but I know that when I came down to it, that was my conclusion, which is, given the potential academic benefits, then we're going to move forward with that calendar decision.
And additionally, we're only proposing one calendar year this year. Usually, we would be on a two-year cycle, correct, Gwen?
Yes, this is a one-year calendar, and the calendar committee would encourage us to have a two-year calendar thereafter.
I had a, oh.
Go ahead.
Something that stood out to me, one, I noticed that although we are coming back the week prior to Labor Day, we're taking that first Friday, which would be September fourth, off, so we're only having a four-day week followed by another four-day week. And then also, in March, the week prior to spring break, I see that we're taking that Friday off as well, and I guess those stood out for me because also, when I looked at, when we're ending the calendar year, I saw that we stuck, we have a two-day week in June, the sixth and seventh, which generally, I've thought in the district, we haven't been real fond of two-day weeks, and so it- And so, it, it just didn't make a ton of sense to me to have that and go that deep into June if we didn't have to. And then also, those two Fridays didn't seem, they weren't in-service days, per se, so I wasn't quite sure why we needed those, and maybe we could trade those out and actually end on June third, rather than continuing to the next week for a couple of days.
That is actually option one. That is the other option that was presented, and that one did not have as many votes. And so, we did have school ending before, or ending on June third. And, you know, we still have to stick within the same, the correct number, one hundred and eighty-four days for teachers and one hundred and seventy days for students. And just as there are a number of people who really were enticed by having the four-day weekend, especially around Labor Day, or being able to begin the spring break a little bit early. So, that's the best thing that I can understand about.
And then you wait for the vote, for those who don't know what?
The vote is what I was talking about earlier.
Right.
There were two options for each, for the, that the calendar committee presented to staff, and, and so, there are a few variations, and that is one of them. One of the calendars did end on June third, and the other calendar ended on June seventh.
So, then we cannot consider option one as a board?
The practice of the board has been that it would go to staff, and then staff has usually then voted on, because we do give a rationale and reasons for each of the calendars, the pros and the cons, so to speak, of each of the calendars. And then whichever one has more votes, that is the one that is typically presented to the board. But that has been the practice of the board for, in the years that I've been here.
Can I just, just because I might be confused, so when you say the vote, that's not the vote of the calendar committee, that's the vote to the greater?
No, it is the vote, it is the vote to the, to the staff.
To the whole, yeah, okay. Not just the thirteen people on the?
No, it is not. In fact, the thirteen people don't, don't vote, it's the staff.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Gwen, going forward, I don't want to stretch too much, but going forward for your next two years that you're looking at for a calendar, what's really needed to get that first semester wrapped up for the high school students before end-of-year break?
Well, that's something that we're continuing to look at. There are lots of ideas that are out there. We have, we've looked at the May term, but we also kind of reeled back, because the May term for the high school is a pilot. And so, it's, this is the first year for all of the high school students to go through this. So, it's premature for us to think that this is going to keep moving forward. One of the other ideas we talked about was, that has been proposed, is, is there something that we can do similar to that at the middle school level, similar to a May term? But again, that was just an idea that was proposed at some of the schools. That was nothing that we were actually going to do, but it was just an idea. So, we're continuing to think. We are, we were, the committee was very much intrigued with the idea of looking at ways for the, for the semester to end before winter break, but it, like I said, it is difficult when we looked at the difference in number of days. We'd almost have to have, we're kind of looking at trimesters as well instead of semesters. So, would that make a difference? Could that help us? So, we're still pondering.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Gwen, I do thank the committee for their work. I appreciate the complexity of the calendar issue, and do, the comments have been made, I think, well regarding the value of having the semester end before winter break. I'm not sure that it outweighs the decision that the committee came to in terms of balancing instructional days. That, that argument does make a lot of sense, but thank you for the work.
And so, the plan for the calendar committee, when do you have to recommence your work again to do the next year or two years?
We are actually planning to meet in January. So, we're planning to meet next, next month, and we all have assignments, so we are looking at different school calendars around the world. Someone's looking at one from London and Saudi Arabia and other places here in the United, in the United States as well.
Thank you.
And I, just to follow up to that, Gwen, ideally, the goal would be to approve the following year's calendar, or the next two years' calendars, under what timeline?
It's really been helpful if we can, if the board can vote on the calendar around November or December of this time. It's really as soon as possible, because oftentimes, people are trying to make vacation plans, and they really need to make plans in advance. So, the sooner we have the parameters for the next two years, then we'll be able to get started.
Excellent, thank you.
So, I, I'm just, when I look at the calendar survey results, and I, I'm just going back to that two days hanging out in June. Pretty much across the board, none of the groups wanted a two-day week. And so, I'm surprised that the staff came back wanting that option. I mean, it was pretty, seven, eighty, pretty much eighty percent wanted three days, and less than forty wanted two days. So, I don't, I'm trying to understand, you know, I've got this information from before, and then they have that, I just am trying to, I'm confused.
Sure. And I would say that, you know, we, the, the committee met five or six times, and we tried to encompass all of the major requests from the, from the survey, but it wasn't one hundred percent. I just have to be honest with that.
I will say, I sort of share that same concern about the two-day week and the Fridays off. I mean, if I had my druthers, I would have it done a different way, I think, unless somebody really stands up besides, you know, the voices said, I think we'll end up deferring to staff, but I, it does make me wonder.
I would agree.
I guess my concern is that I, that this, I understand the process has typically been the staff first, but when I look at this and I, and I realize that, you know, the two-day week is for students, but then the staff, of course, is here for additional days, it seems like we're weighing, outweighing one over the other. And in my, this, this board person's viewpoint, it makes more sense to be done on June third. And I think, I would think that the, you know, that would be more suitable to what the survey results are saying from our families in terms of, you know, not having a two-day week. And I question how much will get done in those, you know, with a weekend and then only two days back in class.
Any additional comments, feedback? We're on to our scheduled review of the five eighteen and five thirty-six policies.
The, in general, the policy committee will be discussing these two policies again, particularly in five eighteen, the do-not-resuscitate policy. We're going to have some feedback from Mary Hyman, our Director of Health Services, and Jeff Jurgensen, our Director of Special Education Services. But for either policy, we would also welcome any board comments or questions, so that we can take them back to our next policy meeting.
Under five eighteen, it looked like all the do-not-resuscitate's were changed to do-not-attempt-resuscitate, except for the one at the end of the purpose. Was that one missed, or is that intended to stay at do-not-resuscitate?
No, that is an excellent catch, and we can clean that up.
I was on policy for a while.
No, yes, and, and it shows. Thank you. We're glad you read it. We can fix that.
Seeing none, we're on to the information portion, or did you have, you, you, all the way through, you wanted to go through?
That's, yes, unless there's any other feedback to take back to the committee, this is what we have for right now.
Okay, five thirty-eight. On the information?
Mr. Chair, course proposals, changes, is that in our discussion section yet?
Letter D.
Sorry, I think we moved that one, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
Next up, our course proposals for next year, which was formerly letter G, it's now D under discussion, fifteen sixteen. Okay, you, you just want to walk us through, Randy?
Sure. On the website, under About Us, is a link to strategic plan information, and under that strategic plan information is something called the educational competencies. The educational competencies represent what we believe the future or next generation profile of the Edina graduate will look like. There are six different competencies that we would expect them to master as they leave the Edina Public School System. Those competencies were criteria used to align these course proposals and change requests. The staff had viewed those competencies and then made their course proposals accordingly. So, what we have in front of us are, and again, is for discussion, we have sixteen new course proposals. We also have some course drops, some updated descriptions from staff, and then some name changes that were proposed. Of the new course proposals, our implementation costs around those new courses would be about one hundred and fifty thousand. That would come out of existing funds in our teaching and learning budget. And I do have a few updates on this document, since it was submitted to our board for review. One of the new courses, or the proposed new courses, says PLTD, PLTW, and it says civic engineering and architecture, that's civil engineering and architecture. And that actually, that course actually already exists, rather, it was supposed to be a course change. And what they're proposing for that course is that that course also is allowed to meet the arts credit requirement. In reviewing the arts standards and the Project Lead the Way curriculum, there is a match between the Project Lead the Way curriculum and what the arts standards would require for performing arts. And also, we have a highly qualified teacher who has a house process licensure in arts, so meeting the two statute requirements would be to have the arts standards embedded and then to have a highly qualified teacher. So, that would be a course change, rather than a new course. We also, around online health, our intention would be to pilot that online health course. That would be our first true online course that we would offer in Edina Public Schools. We would be looking at one or two sections, potentially offering that as a zero-hour course during the school year.
So, can you clarify the difference between that and the current offering, which is an online option?
So, we have, we have health that's offered as a face-to-face course, and then we have health that's offered as a blended experience. So, some of it is face-to-face, and some of it is project-based, where students are on their own. And this would be truly a, a complete online course. There would be some face-to-face opportunities with students around assessment, but other than that, it would be a complete online course. Many students in our district take online health currently through BYU Brigham Young University. They pay for that additional course, and they do that to free up some time in their schedule. So, this, this would be a more equitable offering for our students in Edina, and it would, it would factor into our programming.
Just a clarification, that can be taken during the summer as well?
At this time, we're proposing that they would, that we would offer it during the school year, but the teachers are open to considering other options, and some of those things we'll just have to continue to vet out based on interest from students.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, if you could clarify briefly, there, there is a cost to implementing the new courses, but if I remember correctly from our Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, that new, that cost is also offset by some savings. So, could you speak to that just a little bit?
So, we have a curriculum review cycle, in which each year, we look at various curricular program areas and perform these reviews. And so, we are much lighter in reviews next year, and so, we have some savings in that cycle. And through that savings, we would be able to implement many of these new courses, all of these new courses at this cost, and not have that be an additional cost to the district. So, basically, we're, we're kind of rotating those dollars from program review to this new course implementation.
Thanks.
Randy, are any of the courses that we're considering dropping, it doesn't look like it, but I just want to be sure, does that affect anybody's current plans for graduation, or I just?
No.
Or leave any kids in the lurch?
Sure. So, aspects of language would be, of course, that's not viable, so it hasn't run or hasn't been offered. So, when, so our practice has been, if a course hasn't run for the past three years, then we, we drop it off the, the list of available courses. Positive transitions is actually being replaced, or would be replaced, rather, by middle school skills. So, it's just a, it's kind of a replacement course. So, no, no other impact.
Additional questions, comments? Thank you, Randy, for the work. Moving on to where we were before. Information, announcements, leadership update, committee reports?
Just briefly, we did have a leadership update that we tabled forward. Again, all the strategic work that we have been scheduled to be doing, we're moving on, including a mental health and wellness study, we all talked about the community education study, we're beginning a gifted and talented study right away in two thousand fifteen. The board will also move into their reorganization as they organize once again in January two thousand fifteen. And finally, officially, thank Chad Schmidt for his years of service to Edina Public Schools. This is a rebound time for Chad. He came back, our Director of Research and Evaluation, is headed to South St. Paul to be the Director of Learning. We wish him his very best, our very best, and know that he will stay in touch with us, but he's done great things for us at several levels. You know, the board's always appreciated Chad's work and his ability to even facilitate some of the great dialogues we've had in various group settings. So, Chad, we wish you the best, and thank you for your service here in our community.
Any additional committee reports, updates, additional items? Seeing none, any motion to adjourn?
So, moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.